Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, January 28, 2019, 7:00 PM. We're in committee meetings tonight. The first one will be Transportation Committee with Council members Kotzes, McGee, and Crowell.
Okay. President Nisley, thank you and welcome back tonight. Actually, I just have, I have one thing this evening, and this is a discussion on the complete streets and a resolution that we hopefully form up here in the next few weeks about it. So I was thinking about the speed of government and how fast, how quickly we move on some things, and going through my computer, I actually found my, this little flyer that the Health Department put out back on October 19, 2016. So this was about the first time that I had had some engagement with a seminar about complete streets, and really from that, the Health Department was really looking for some legislation on this. So I want to tell you that this isn't something that we just thought up of last week. In fact, it's been a long time coming, and I apologize that it's taken this long, but really, I believe at this point, we're in a really, we're in a, we're in a great spot. Because entering into my second year on Transportation Committee, I feel confident that just looking at some of the resolutions that we've seen from other cities, that we can, we can improve on it and do even better. Now, I want to just throw out a couple, just two definitions. One is about complete streets, and this is from Smart Growth America, just referring to the, what the concept of a complete street is. And basically, these are streets that are for everyone. They're designed and operated to enable safe access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. Complete streets make it easy to cross the street, to walk to shops, and bicycle to work. I also want to talk about another objective that people are working towards on our, on our public right-of-ways, which, you know, which I personally believe is, is one of the most important things that, that make up a city. You know, because this is the place where everybody gets to, to travel. So, you know, we can talk about a city pool, we can, you know, a wastewater treatment plant, probably about the same, same level as a street, because it's something that gets used every day. If you leave your house, you're utilizing this system. But the, there is, there's been a movement called a zero vision, I'm sorry, a vision-zero movement, and we're using best practice traffic safety policy that targets zero fatalities and serious injuries. And so this is a, this is a long-term goal. This is something that, that we hope that can get achieved, I can still say hopefully in my lifetime. Right now, every year in the United States, 2.35 million people are injured and nearly 40,000 die from car crashes. So this is, this is something that, you know, looking, looking forward, we're hoping to address. And a complete street is something, is that policy that can kind of help encourage more safety within our, within our roadways. And looking at some of the, some of the ordinances and resolutions that have been passed by other cities, a lot of them speak directly to, to that type of transit, that type of travel. For me, I believe that, that looking forward, we have a lot of, we have a lot of different things that are, that are coming into play, mostly the autonomous vehicles. Looking at those, and those are going to really redesign our streets. Here recently, you know, this is always a problem for my family. What do you get, you know, the Chair of Transportation, you know, for Christmas when they have everything else that they need? But I got this book, and this really, this is called No One at the Wheel, and it's Driverless Cars and the Roads of the Future. And just looking at what, what we're starting to embark on, just, just as the city of Athens is starting to look at being a test site for some of these vehicles. These vehicles can take out the human element of traversing these, these systems. So, so the idea of zero vision, or, or vision-zero planning could actually be accomplished in their next generation. But where does that put the rest of us? Where does that put the human aspect? So the idea that you have, have the streets so that people can interface them with, without a car, whether you don't have a license because you're eight years old, or, you know, or if you're on the other end of the scale and you've had your, had your license taken away because you can no longer operate a vehicle. You know, the whole idea of, of parking could just go away with, with autonomous vehicles because these things could just drop, you know, drop people off and go away to some remote lot or something like that. So if we were to continue to design our streets the same way we did 20 years ago, I think we would be remiss in producing a product that doesn't get the most out of our public right-of-ways. So when I look at, look at some of the ordinances that I put on, put on the drive, a lot of them talk specifically about the modes of transportation, bicycles, pedestrians, buses. But, you know, for me, a complete street can be more of a component to get, get people out of their houses. If, if it's something that you can interact with in a safer, more comfortable fashion, it can, it can encourage community. So, you know, there, there are bigger things that I, that I see, but, you know, crafting them and getting, getting them down into an ordinance, that's always the hard part. So I'm definitely open to a discussion and willing to, to hear other people's thoughts and ideas on this topic. Yes?
Thank you, Member Kotzes. I just want to speak to support for the streets, complete streets initiative. And I think having this discussion and getting the resolution out there is really important to show our commitment to moving forward on this. But getting to the ordinance stage also is going to be really important to codify it in the city, so that when we move forward with projects, we are always thinking of all users of our streets and not just those in automobiles. And I think we're, this administration is already moving in that direction. I think East State Street project, I think that the city input and the planning for the Stimson Avenue project really takes on a lot of the elements that we want to see when we think about our streets and when we think about whether it's multipurpose pathways as part of the street project, or bike lanes, or sidewalks that don't impede wheelchairs or other users of our streets. So I'm looking forward to having this resolution and then moving forward and having an ordinance on the books. But as you said, that's going to take some time, we need to do it well, we need to do it right, and I think the resolution is the first step in my mind to get this out there, let the public know that we are behind this, and then work on the ordinance.
All right, great. Yes, Member McGee?
Thank you. I tend to feel sometimes like I'm the loyal opposition. In this particular case, I have some trepidation in the fact that what we're doing is really inching towards another bureaucratic kind of nightmare. When I was elected, one of the things I favored, and I still do favor, is finding some way to turn the primary parts of Court Street into more pedestrian-friendly or user-friendly areas where people can have better restaurants, have areas where we can have maybe concerts and utilize more. However, we need to take into account always the weather, which Athens seems to have a kind of a various weather pattern, as well as the hilly areas of our city. And I've noticed in our city, we set aside areas for bicycle traffic, and we have no bicycles on those areas. For instance, the hills that people go up on, I believe it's on Congress Street, where I never see bicyclists using those hills because it's too steep, for one thing. We have State Street where we basically disguised an effort to slow traffic down and by taking away the width of the, the street under the guise of using it for bicycles use. Yet, we hardly ever have any bicyclists using East State Street there. So I do have some concern on that. I'm also concerned about two things. One is, I see the cars often being kind of labeled the thing we'd like to get rid of. In this particular proposal, I was wondering, for instance, when I think about a safe, common area that can be used by the public, I think of the bike path down by the, by the football stadiums and everywhere, where in the springtime you have hundreds and hundreds of people gathering, and you have bicyclists tearing through there because they own the bike path or had the attitude that they own the bike path. So if you're really talking about safe streets, then thinking about use, pedestrian uses for things too, I mean, you have to understand that bicyclists need to be limited as well, and perhaps they need to follow the law occasionally as well as by having lights on and maybe stopping for stoplights and stopping for stop signs. And we don't seem to enforce any of that. So again, I'm concerned about our going through this, another shifting of nice words or nice language, but perhaps not really dealing with what we want to have happen, which the mayor, I know, had expressed again some concern a while back, that perhaps we really need to do something to revitalize downtown. And I don't think this great concept of complete streets or actually, I think you had said zero-vision streets perhaps, really satisfies that. So I'm welcome, I welcome the opportunity to hear more about it, but over the years, I've watched too many times where we just pass somewhat meaningless directives. And I hope this is more than that, and I hope it deals with more situations. And finally, I'd just like to add that you mentioned sidewalks and things. I noticed that some areas of our uptown area, especially in the area that would be Stimson Avenue, still don't have sidewalks on all the areas that border Stimson Avenue. For instance, some of the shops that we're aware of, and I just wonder, do we intend to put sidewalks for, that would cover the entire area? Because that might be appropriate if we're talking about safe streets. For instance, I believe your bicycle shop doesn't have sidewalks next to it. And so I would like to see that expanded, the whole sidewalk concept expanded. Rather than take away the streets, let's expand some sidewalks so people can walk safely. So that would be my concern, and thank you.
Okay. Can I, can I answer a little bit? So the, you know, complete streets basically is, doesn't mean put bike lanes everywhere. And that's the thing that I really want to get away from some of these, of these ordinances, is that a complete street is more about looking at what, what is there and what is, what is needed, what we may want to encourage as a city, but at the same time also have respect for what, what needs to happen in that, in that area. A complete street could include a stage, you know, it could include something that's, but it's something that's taking that, that space and saying, we can do better with this, based on where we are right now or where we, where we're trying to go in the future as a city. So that's, that's, for me, that's, that's what a, what a complete street can do, and it's really encouraging to, to basically, as you approach every project, think about it and, and kind of challenge, you know, challenge the thought process of trying to figure out how we can, how we can do this better. And I believe, you know, we've had, we've had two engineers and we've had a couple administrations that have, that have, that have lived by this. And so I think it's just putting something into, you know, into code that, that just respects where, where we have, where we have been and lets the future, future legislators and administration kind of have some guidance going forward.
Can I speak again?
Yes, please.
I think that's, this is all, this is a wonderful conversation, because complete streets does have sort of a misnomer. I mean, it is about sidewalks too. It is about pedestrians, and it is about people, and whatever your choice of vehicle is, whether you're walking, whether you're riding a skateboard, whether you're riding a bicycle. So it's a, it's a, as I understand it, and there's a training in about two weeks that I know I'm participating in, in the community center, and we'll learn more there and be able to improve our knowledge of what are complete streets. But the research that I have done and the training that I have received already, it is about a full thinking of how we use the ability to get from Stimson Avenue to Morris Avenue. If there's no sidewalk there, then absolutely, a sidewalk is a discussion of what is needed in that area. I think we know that, that making our streets, our driving lanes narrower is helping to slow traffic. I think we can see that, that East State Street is slowing traffic, and that allows us the space to do other things by narrowing those traffic lanes, whether it be sidewalks, whether it be bicycle lanes. And I'm just glad, Patrick, that you mentioned my favorite bike lane in the city, because my commute is on North Congress, and before they put the bike lane up the hill, I would often get pushed over into that wall because there were multiple lanes of traffic. Now I have my own bike lane going up, and I haven't been pushed into the wall. So I appreciate that bike lane anyway, but it just has one user. Thank you.
Can I add one other comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to make the suggestion that at some point in time, if the city council is considering doing anything to maybe change the uptown area or to implement some sort of complete street program, that you consider timing involved. I know I've been at some cities where, for instance, they will block certain streets off at certain times. There's no reason why Court Street, for instance, could be blocked off on a Saturday from, say, 5:00 until, you know, 2:00 in the morning or something like that. There's, there are ways to do that. So, I mean, rather than limit us to, you know, basically grandiose pontification, perhaps what we should be doing is to come up with real designs to impact progress. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a comment from observations, but also having watched city administration over the past 10 years, and want to commend Andy Stone, who was Director of Public Works and is now our Service Safety Director, because he was one of the first people that I heard talking about, we have an opportunity like the bike lane on Congress, or like the bike lane coming up Richland Avenue, which is, which is used. Where we can implement them, yes. I've also seen us, seen us move towards sidewalk inventory, which I think is getting that bigger picture. And now, I think of the complete streets program in my head as kind of the rubric around which we can envision for the city and involving all of those things. So optimistic about it.
Mayor?
I support this resolution and the ordinance moving forward. I really do acknowledge Member McGee's comments on this, and in particular, again, back to the sidewalks. You know, sidewalks make things typically ADA accessible as well, which is part of this equation that we're talking about with complete streets, is making sure that they are complete for everyone, not just those of us who are currently able-bodied and able to emulate through the terrain. I also acknowledge, I too have, Member McGee, have been to a number of cities that do have timing of being able to close down for streets, for farmers' markets, for events, and so on and so forth. So, but I think this is a, this is a great starting point as we look forward. I also want to acknowledge, I appreciate you acknowledging then Director of Engineering and Public Works, but also former mayor Paul Wile, he also was a strong advocate of looking at multimodal streets and keeping that in mind. And, you know, my intent is to continue to build upon that, to make sure that we are a city that is multimodal, active transportation is alive and well here in Athens as we move forward, and smartly. I mean, it's, it's, there's a strategic component to doing this, too. You don't just go willy-nilly and go, okay, we're going to make everything, but bike lanes everywhere. And that's some of the things we've seen, hasn't it, is bike lanes that are only on a stretch of a street and then kind of end without having things like, you know, exploring share road or other ways in which we can inform people about sharing the road, being good stewards of our, the largest piece of real estate that the city has, which is our city street.
And I wanted to, to mention now that we do have, we do have a member in the audience that wanted to speak on this tonight, too, Megan Buskirk, who's from the Athens City County Health Department, and was the, was the lead on a lot of, a lot of this work. So I want to thank her for the work that she put into it. She's no longer on the, on this, on this task, but, but wanted to come tonight and still speak to this, to this point. So please, if you can, it'd be great.
And Megan is dutifully signing in, as we instruct everybody to do. And you're so obedient, so thank you for being here. And we'll have it for the record, so we spell your name right in the minutes. That's part of the purpose, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me, and thank you for having this discussion. I'll give a little bit of background about how complete streets kind of came to be in Athens and just some of my thoughts on it. So as Peter mentioned, the first time it kind of became talked about, I think, in this county was in the fall of 2016. I'm with the Athens City County Health Department as a health educator, so I've been working on this topic for about four years. And we have had a lot of technical assistance and guidance from different state agencies, such as the Ohio Department of Health and ODOT, and they sponsored the Complete Streets Workshop in 2016. Since then, there has been a lot of discussions. We put together, you know, we took a draft and we had a group of community stakeholders from the city, the county, the university, transit, and the community, and we got together to talk about the feasibility of this. You know, we drafted some language. Since then, we've written some grant applications to do things like traffic counts and assess the city. So there's been a lot of support from the state. It is definitely something they are, are hoping people do. I also think that complete streets really goes with what I see Athens as being all about, which is safety, being inclusive. So as the mayor mentioned, it really does help with ADA accessibility. It helps with safety. There's a social justice component, because, you know, we know as Athens being the poorest county in the state, a lot of people aren't walking and biking because they're choosing to do that for fun. That's just an economic necessity. So it's really important to make the streets safe for everybody regardless. And then there's some also kind of side-added benefits. I really see Athens County becoming, you know, more into the ecotourism. You know, we have our, our Bike Way, which brings in a lot of outdoor recreational tourism, and then the Bailey's Mountain Biking Track. So how do we get those people from the trail and into our city to spend money? We make it so it's safe and that they can come in by bike and get a cup of coffee, go to a show, get dinner. So I think it's a, you know, it's a really important thing for many reasons. It's something that Athens is already basically doing. You know, I saw bus stops on East State Street, and that made me very happy the other day. And I know that a lot of other people are noticing them, too. There's one other thing I wanted to say. Oh. So we were talking about not just doing something willy-nilly. So at the end of the complete streets policy, there's a list of measures that you track every year, such as linear feet of sidewalk added, things like that. It really, the complete streets is really about being purposeful about your planning. And so, you know, you can get those metrics, which I'm guessing are already being tracked anyway, but if you're kind of compiling, compiling all that information into one document, you have a very clear picture of your progress. You can celebrate that each year. And then having that complete streets policy adopted actually does open you up to a lot of more transportation grants and state grants, just because you have that. So it's, it's just really good for so many reasons, and it really isn't about taking away from cars or making bikes more prominent. It's just kind of a guiding framework, a mentality of saying, this is what we're trying to do when we're retrofitting a street, you know, an old street or doing something new. It's just having a clear vision. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So I will, I will move forward on this. I will also get with administration, too, because the last thing we want to do is produce something that's going to, you know, bind the hands of the engineer. So we want to make sure that this isn't something that hampers any type of processes. And, and yes, that's, that's all I have tonight here for the Transportation Committee. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And just to do a double check, is there anybody else that wanted to make a comment about complete streets?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Judy Roman. That's okay. Before we move on.
Maybe I should sign in, too, huh? It's Judy Roman, 12 Northwood Drive, Athens, Ohio. When you're talking about complete streets, it would be nice if we could have something going down Madison, since I walk down there all the time. And it's, you know, I mean, I've had to jump out of the way. So it's just something that, and also on Columbia between, like, Northwood and Madison, and, because, you know, you're going up a hill, so people really can't see you. And it's the same thing, you know, it's kind of like a culvert you can drop down into, but I would prefer not to do that. So anyway, that's just my thought on, on complete streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, we'll move on to finance and personnel, and that's chaired by Councilmember Reisner and also has councilmembers Kotzes, Butler, and Crowell.
We're all here. Thank you, Madam President. Glad to see you're back. Just two items tonight, finance, personnel, appropriations/transfers, and staffing amend. There's a couple of topics under appropriations transfer. We have the honor to speak to a couple of them. First, I believe, I want to talk about the, making a amendment to the budget ordinance that we passed last year concerning the recreation center.
Yes. And this happens every year after we put a budget in place, we realize that we've missed something or put it in the wrong place, or once we do the revenue, which I have now done, we realize we aren't going to have the money that we thought, which we don't know before the end of the year, about carryover, et cetera. So we have some increases and decreases for appropriations that we're going to need. As Councilmember Reisner just said, money for internal admin allocations. Our, for community and rec, community center and rec are all in the Recreation Fund budget, but we need to put some of that in the Recreation Fund budget, or in the Community Center budget. And then as far as the internal service transfers for Court, rather than take them all out of the general fund, we've been working with the judge, and so he has really helped us out, and we're going to spread them out. There will still be some coming out of the general fund, but it will come out of their two computer funds and one other fund. And then, at the same time, he's also increased some of his fees, which aren't huge increases. It's really hard in a court in our area, I think, to, to do that too much and then expect people to still pay their fines, which is what we really need. And so, but it will absolutely help and help cover these. So those will be some new appropriations in those funds where we haven't taken money for those transactions. for those transfers before. If anybody's wondering, we transfer money out of all the funds that have mostly people, computers, or vehicles to, to pay for services that are provided, such as the IT department and the mechanics. The mechanics service the vehicles for the entire city, and so the different funds need to pay for those services. Computer services, we have one little department that services the computers and phones throughout the city. And so we charge the different funds, different departments, not a huge amount, but to pay for those. So that's what this is all about. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I'll just throw this out there now, too, though, but our, our carryover in the general fund was about 1.3 million this year, and last year it was $2 million. So I know I've been kind of whiny for the last six or seven months about the general fund, but unfortunately, my predictions have come true. So we really do, and, and making these changes with the court funds is definitely going to help us. Any questions? Okay.
Questions? Are there any other appropriation items, transfers? Those are the two I'm aware of. Okay. Staffing? What do we have on that?
Well, I can speak to that in particular. The, we're going to need to move some, a couple of people around temporarily within the staffing ordinance for engineering and public works. You know, the Assistant Director is going to be going to an extended military training. And so in light of that, I believe it's about four months that he'll be at that training. So what we're going to need to do is put someone temporarily into that position and still hold it for the individual. And so what I'm going to ask is that we amend to have two Assistant Directors positions in the city. The individual who's going away is, since it is military, will get paid for 30 days. But after that, we won't be paying him for the remainder of that time, but we will be paying for, obviously, the person who moves into that position. It is temporary, but once the Assistant Director comes back, then that person will go back to his other position. We'll also have to temporarily promote someone to sewer labor supervisor's role in downtown the wastewater treatment plant. So some changes, but we're going to need council's approval to make those adjustments to the staffing order.
Okay. Will their compensation change with their, with the temporary promotion, or will they stay at their same salary?
No, it'll, it'll, it'll change.
Okay.
Temporarily.
Right. Member Crowell?
Mayor, will the second Assistant Director start after that there 30-day period, or will there be a 30-day period where we're paying two?
No, we'll have to pay two for one month. Yep. But at this point, we won't have to, you know, and looking at the books, we're not going to have to do any changes to the TC 100s for, for having these two individuals and that being paid for that 30-day period. And then, again, after that 30 days, that person rolls off and will not be receiving any pay for the remainder of that training period until he comes back and resumes his role.
Okay. Seems correct. Any other staffing issues coming up?
No, not that I can think of at this moment.
Good. Auditor, do you have anything else?
No.
Well, okay, so I believe this committee is closed.
Okay. We'll start with committee of the whole. Welcome Councilmembers Grayson, Fall, and McGee back up. And our one item here tonight is the Home Rule Resolution. And, okay. And Councilmember Fall will be speaking to this.
So I wanted to introduce a Home Rule Resolution at the start of, of this new year and a new administration that's coming into the State House. And other reasons, I thought it would be a good opportunity to talk about Home Rule and how it's important to the city. And so I sent out a newspaper article this afternoon that was a really good outline of what Home Rule entails. Home Rule is set in the state constitution, basically says that communities and cities of the state of Ohio have a right to self-government within the laws of Ohio. So the, it's a very, it's ingrained in our constitution. So they have, they have rights to exercise the powers of self-government and to adopt and enforce within their city limits such local police, sanitary, and other similar regulations. But lately, because of the administrations that have gone and have been making rules and regulations for the last few years, our ability to have Home Rule has been eroded. And it's being eroded constantly by Columbus. We saw that when they were talking about taking away the opportunity for cities and towns to regulate plastic and similar sort of things. The city, the state legislature decided that maybe, you know, having that sort of legislation go through at local levels means that there wouldn't be as much customers for some of the plastic industry. Another time, they've done it over and over. Our income tax, when we have to go and pass income tax changes to our code, because they have preempted and usurped our local authority to collect our income tax from our citizens. And so I'd like to open it up for discussion. And, discussion?
One thing that's been disturbing me about the usurpation of local control has been on the technology side of it. One thing that I, I've noticed in talking with my constituents, the biggest complaint I have in my neighborhood has to do with cable and internet. And I get all kinds of complaints about both and wanting to know, what is the city doing about it? And I think the problem is, is that people have in their mind that several years ago, the, once upon a time, the city could actually negotiate with a cable provider, sit down with the law director and their representative, and hash out an agreement, a contract that said, okay, in exchange for the services that you're going to provide, the city will get such and such benefits at such and such rates and so on. Now, that disappeared about seven or eight years ago. The city has no authority now to negotiate or talk with or do anything with these providers. The state of Ohio has already decided, this is who you have, this is what you will do, and you're going to have to be happy with it because that's just the way it is. And I really, really don't like that attitude at all. I like the idea that we can say, well, you know, cable company, you're not doing a very good job with, with this. I think it's time for you to just pull your plug and we're going to get somebody else. We, we have no, no leverage to do that now. Well, that's in the past, and there's not much we can do about that. That's happened. But now there's other things that's coming forward. This whole concept of what they call the small cell, this G5, where these cellular providers would like to come into our municipality and say, oh, I see a public lamppost there. I want to put my antenna up on that post. And by the way, I'm not going to pay you for it. I'm not even going to ask your permission to do it. I'm just simply going to do that because the state of Ohio says I can. And the state of Ohio says I can do it because it's good for my business. Full stop. I don't like that either. I don't want millions of little antennas just popping up willy-nilly here and there, up and down the neighborhoods and on our lampposts and so on. And in addition, if we're stuck with it, we don't even get compensated for it. So, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. There's other things like that coming. So it's, it's hard to say what will happen when we get driverless vehicles on the streets. Will the city be able to have any type of regulation concerning that? I hope we do. Or will the state preempt that and say, well, that's just not good for business, you know? We just can't have you do that, so we're going to tell you how you're going to have these. And by the way, you're going to have them whether you want them or not. I'm not saying one way or the other, or whether it's a good idea or not, but these are things we, we have to look at and, yeah. Somewhere we have to draw a line and say, hey, you know, enough's enough. So I'm for this resolution.
I just wanted to thank Member Fall for bringing this issue to us. And one thing that, that Member Reisner mentioned is, is something that I, I find particularly irritating or troublesome about the usurping of our Home Rule is, is the single-use container issue. I, I find it really ironic and frustrating that a government, a state government that talks about smaller government and, you know, we, local, local school boards should make those decisions, local governments should make those decisions. And then they pass laws that take that control, take that option away from us entirely. And I, I believe that the decision of whether or not we have single-use containers in the city of Athens should be up to the residents of the city of Athens. And, and that, that should be something that, that we can make those choices. And, and whether it's concerns regarding safety and gun laws within the city limit or plastic containers, it, it's distressing that the state has decided they should take those decisions away from us as a community. And so thank you for, for bringing this issue up. And I, it's amazing how many facets of our life we, we are, as a city, are losing choices in because of, of changes in, in state legislation.
So some of, some of the things that they've preempted over the last few years are things that involve payday lending companies, restricting cities from making local hiring laws or increases in local minimum wage or sick days. They've preempted the ability for communities to say that animals that are sold, puppies that are sold in their towns, come from humane puppy breeders and from shelters. That was a deal for the puppy mills. And it's over and over. The self, the small cell, the ability to reduce or restrict certain types of products, dangerous products. And so if, if we don't, we've been talking about this for a while, and we started talking about it with the fracking and the preemption of all the laws about fracking and injection wells that they can, that they can inflict upon our community. And I think that now we are joined in a, in a court case about the small cell, and there are other ones. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that, so they can hold their legislators up in Columbus accountable for this erosion of self-government. And so this is one of the reasons is to provide information and education. So I'll bring this up. I'll send out a draft of it in the middle of the week. Feel free to send me, you know, things to include. You want to say something?
I just was going to ask whether you were going to include Athens as the People's Republic of Athens. We have a name at the State House. I think it would probably get their attention at least.
Right, well, and, you know, this, this one article was talking about the state of Western Reserve. And so, you know, there's other, so, but, you know, it's, it's, we are, we're the best people to be able to make rules and regulations for the people for our health, safety, and welfare.
I really appreciate the fact this is moving forward, you know? And it's not just state. I think that we need to push this envelope even further. You know, when I go to the National League of Cities, you know, preemption comes up all the time to even include whether or not you can call yourself a sanctuary city. You know, what's really needed is comprehensive immigration reform, not, not impacting someone negatively because you don't view things the same way that, that, that things are viewed sometimes up in the White House. But, Member Reisner, you were referring to the small cell, and in particular, it's the public right-of-way. You know, for us to lose control over being able to manage our own public right-of-way, I mentioned this at the onset of, of council meeting tonight, is that city streets, think about this from a, the largest real estate that the city itself controls are the streets. You know, it's 192 miles of, of, you know, one-way miles of street in the city to include its right-of-way. And if we can't manage that right-of-way in terms of what goes underground or over, then, then what good are you doing with your own right-of-way? You know, the other thing, too, to keep your eyes on is the ability or the conversation of preemption when it comes to a city's ability to have differential rates if you're providing water beyond the city corporate limits. And we do provide water to other entities, but the ability to transport that water, not physically, well, physically, I mean, through the pipe itself and having lift stations or pump stations to get the water through the distribution system further out, that there's cost associated with that. But to, to lose that ability as well, you know, would be impactful on the city, on any city. So again, I would suggest or request that, that Council, Chris Fall, Member Fall, when you do this, that you do think, not just in terms of what the State House is doing to other municipalities across the state, but also at the federal level, things that are happening. But I, I appreciate this. This is, again, a conversation that comes up at the National League of Cities to where there's a session every, whether it's the city summit or if it's at the congressional city, there's always a conversation on preemption that it's not just in the state of Ohio. We're seeing it everywhere. But again, the ability for municipalities to govern themselves is slowly being eroded. And that's just, just flat out wrong.
And it's most of the time, majority, almost all the time, it's because big businesses push it through, like Alec and other lobbyists and stuff. Small cell was pushed by AT&amp;T, you know? So it is, it's a worrying trend, and I think it's going to probably even increase in the chaos that we have right now. And until people work together and the citizens start getting really pissed about things, you know, we're going to take the lead, and then the people are going to be able to tell people that they're pissed. So, put it bluntly. So I will bring that forward. Any other questions?
I have one. Mayor, you mentioned that you, this, this topic comes up at the conferences you attend. Are there any minutes or records of, of the give and take of opinions at these, at these sessions?
Yeah, other than the information that I bring back with me that are handouts at these sessions, and I can certainly bring those, you know, share what I have, go through my files, and I can share what I have. But I'll be going to the National League of Cities, you know, Congressional City Conference in March, and I will certainly bring back the information again. I don't think that there's anyone there who's actually taking down, you know, any level of minutes. These are conferences and sessions within the conference.
That might be a poster session or a slideshow or something.
We can get the various programs, too, that will give contact numbers and everything to the people who did the workshop presentation. So we can bring those in. I have a couple from the left, too. So, and there's all sorts of stuff. Very interesting. Great. Well, thank you very much. My next item was a resolution to ask certain people in the state of Ohio to push to have the government open. And I'm particularly looking at Portman, Robert Portman. But they amazingly opened the government. So I am actually going to table this resolution discussion because they put a date of February 15th, and so we may be back here with a discussion of why they shouldn't close the government. Thank you.
And Mayor, you had something?
Just a friendly suggestion to the council, since this is your resolution, and I certainly... And I certainly, um, appreciate the intent of this resolution, um, given that we have just gone through the longest shutdown in the history of this nation. Um, that it might be worth your while to continue to push this resolution forward because there is just three weeks in which there.
Okay.
And so maybe as a friendly suggestion that it would be to encourage, um, wiser minds to work hard to find some, some level of resolution as they move forward to continue to keep the government open because a lot of people were hurt. 800,000 people in this nation were hurt by that government shutdown as a play on, you know, on getting something that in my mind, my opinion is, was a non-realistic, uh, request, but regardless, you know, it, you can't sit and hold citizens of the nation hostage over various things. So it just, that's my two cents on the whole topic.
Well, and I think that that's a really good, um, suggestion. So maybe I will untable it since I can do that. I can untable it and we will send, I will work on a preemptive government shutdown, um, resolution that we can bring up next Monday.
I just wanted to say, since you're the only one who received a Christmas card from the White House, obviously you have some sort of influence there and I would applaud your going forward.
That was, that was creepy and I decided if he sends a Valentine Day card, I'm going to have to contact the Secret Service. Sarah?
I just wanted to, to comment. I, I think likely it's more than just the employees, um, who were furloughed that were hurt. I, I am certain there are small businesses that relied on, um, customers who then didn't have income in order to support those small businesses. And, um, families, I, I know that, um, members of our, our local law enforcement and, um, court system were concerned that as, um, funding and food supplies became, um, really diminished for members of our community, that, that that would result in increases in domestic violence and increases in child hunger. And so it, it was devastating, hurtful spat that, um, and just, so I, I also agree, we should go ahead and move forward and, and say, we are strongly opposed to this happening again because there's so many incredibly hurtful consequences to innocent individuals.
My, it was just a cruel thing.
Yeah.
Stupid and cruel. And I'll stop there because I'll say something, I'll get in trouble.
Well, we'll see what you have to write in for us.
Please have four things that you want to have included in it.
And, uh, thank you all for being here tonight. We'll meet next Monday night, we'll be in regular business session on February 4th. Thank you.